Two opportunities for how to do that. If you're on a new version of Zoom, you simply go to the lower right-hand side of your screen, click on the reactions button, and then select the raise hand button. If you're on an older version of Zoom, you'll need to click on the participants menu. That's about in the center of the bottom of your screen. It'll open up a white window, and at the bottom of that window, there'll be a button that says raise hand. When you raise your hand, it'll put you in order of when you raise your hand, and we'll call on you one by one. Please keep yourself muted until the point that you are making public comment. And with that, I'll turn it over to Chair Holland to start the meeting.
Thank you, Hatton. So we'll go ahead, and I will call the meeting to order. I will welcome everyone who's here in person or attending virtually, and I'll take roll call. In the boardroom is Trustee Hobbins, Trustee Avgeris, Trustee Lorenzen, Trustee Holland, Trustee Oldperson, Trustee Wake, Trustee Vogel, and Trustee Mercer. And attending remotely on Zoom is Trustee Decker. And not present is Trustee Sturbis and Trustee McDonald. And I think that accounts for the 11 trustees. And so with that, we will stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance. And would you lead us, Dr.?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item number three on the agenda is to review, revise, and approve the agenda. And the trustees have in front of them an amended agenda, including just a couple of additional names for one aspect of the action items for later. And so any other requests to revise the order in which we'll be looking at the agenda? I hear someone talking, so I... Oh, okay. It's someone talking upstairs. So I assume that's not anyone asking to revise the agenda. So now we move on to item four, which is to approve the minutes from the regular board meeting of April 27, 2021. First, is there any request from any trustee to make any modification to those proposed minutes? And seeing no hands being raised, is there a motion to approve the minutes from the regular board meeting of April 27? Moved by Trustee Wake. Is there a second? Second by Trustee Hobbins. All trustees in favor of the motion to approve the minutes from the regular board meeting, please, of April 27, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to all trustees attending the meeting. Then we move on to public comment. Sorry, I'm just a little distracted. Now we move on to public comment on non-agenda items. This is the time when any member of the public would like to make a comment on an item that we're not going to be discussing tonight. And so anything that is of relevance to MCPS through the school district. And so we ask you to spell your first and last name, state your name, spell your first and last name if they have an unusual spelling. And we ask you to keep your comments to three minutes. And as I think Hatton might have explained, if you're raising your hand on Zoom, you go into a queue. And so we call on folks in the order in which hands have been raised. And so I see there's a few hands up. So I'll go ahead and start calling on members of the public. Some members who have hands up do not have a last name associated with them. So the first hand in the queue is someone with the name of Jessie. So Jessie, if you can unmute yourself and identify yourself by first and last name and provide public comment. Thanks.
Hi, thank you. My name is Jessie Salter. I'm speaking on behalf of our son, who will not be wearing a mask at school the remainder of the year. I'm hoping to seek an alternative solution for finishing his education. I am sure we're not the only family feeling this way, and I'd hope that you guys would have taken that into consideration when you made the decision to continue forcing masks in school. Many families have been reluctantly following the government and Board of Health guidelines all year. And the fact that you assumed no one would stand up for their child and their well-being is quite insulting. I'm not speaking to try and change your decision, though I wish you would. I'm simply asking that there be a plan in place for the children that feel as though their feelings and beliefs have been overlooked for far too long. Many of these kids are tired of being told they are resilient or that they need to be resilient when it fits another's political agenda and fears. In your planning horizon, you state that Missoula County Public Schools feels it is vital for youth to be engaged in issues that impact their lives. You also state that you provide education and other supports to students to make healthy decisions regarding their physical, mental, behavioral, social, and emotional well-being. I would like to see that support in this particular situation for my son and the many other families that are struggling with your decisions to not give children and families a chance to make a choice over their own well-being. What plan do you have in place to make sure that our kids that want to exercise their rights still have access to finishing their education? Thank you.
Thank you. And Ethan Seller, or Seiler, apologies if I've mispronounced the last name, is the next in the queue. Please go ahead and unmute and provide public comment.
Thank you. It's pronounced Seiler, S-D-I-L-E-R. And I'm speaking in regards to, I'm not sure what the agenda is today, but I'm speaking in regard to the incident that's occurred last Friday regarding Judson Miller, the principal of Hellgate High School. I heard, you know, I'm just a community member, but I overheard, I saw the video.
Mr. Seiler, public comment cannot be addressing a particular individual. If you want to contact Dr. Watson concerning any concerns you have, but public comment is about general items of concern and not as to any individual that works in the district.
May I try again then? Because I do, I can rephrase my statement to be about a general issue, as that was what I was trying to get to. Apologies, apologies.
That's okay.
So the incident that occurred, without naming names, I guess, apologies, regarded the dress code rules. And the conflict that occurred, people were angry at the Hellgate administration, but they claimed they were simply enforcing what the school board had as down as their policy in regards to dress code. And I'd like to say that I feel the dress code is not adequate for addressing certain situations. I find my inability to mention Judson Miller a bit restrictive, but I will attempt to contact Mr. Watson in the future regarding this issue. But I feel the idea of requiring students to dress in a way that is not, quote, distracting, is really terrible because it places the onus on students who dress a certain way when it's hot out to, you know, dress, to feel the standard to, that they are responsible for preventing other people from staring inappropriately at them. Well, I feel it's the goal of the community to teach people instead not to be distracted by someone wearing a spaghetti strap or showing some skin because it's hot out. I think it's the duty of the school to teach its students, or the school district, to enforce on its students the ability to respect each other's boundaries and to not force the students whose boundaries have been violated to have the victims have the responsibility for them to address this issue rather than, rather than having the school teach responsibility and boundary respectfulness. So I ask that the board, please consider this, no matter what the agenda is tonight, to consider this and to consider changing the dress code. I apologize for my missteps over the rules of procedure, and I yield my time. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate that you rephrased your comments to be more general and appropriate. So thank you very much. And I'm looking to see... Let me just scroll down.
I don't see any other individuals.
Thanks. Thank you for public comment on non-agenda items. And now we come to... There is also written correspondent in the packet. And now we come to an important part of our meeting, which is to recognize the student trustees from 2020 and 2021. They have been amazing. When necessary, they have tag teamed it to make sure that we knew what was going on in all our high schools. And I know that all of these students from our first meeting at the beginning of the year and when they told us a little bit about what they were doing in school, they had a lot of commitments, and yet they were very committed to being the best trustees they could under circumstances that were not always the most ideal, to say the least. And so Dr. Watson can share on shares the screen. But we do have certificates that will be delivered to the Big Sky High School trustees, Jaden Bede and Ashlyn Everett. Thank you both for making sure that you attended meetings on behalf of Big Sky High School. We really appreciated that. Hellgate High School is Waverly Winterer. And again, Waverly was at, I think, almost every meeting. So thank you to Waverly. Seeley Swan High School, Claire Kovach and Eric Lorenz. I have to give a special shout out to Claire and Eric because this is the second year they had served as student trustees and almost never did one of them not make a meeting. So thank you to them especially. And then at Sentinel High School, Malone Ingram and Daisy Kalina. And again, they were very responsible. And actually, all of the trustees, which I'll get to once I introduce Willard's trustee, Mariposa Restau. All the trustees, student trustees, really made an effort this year, despite a lot of the disruption in the buildings, of checking in with everyone at the schools to find out what was going on academically, socially, helping others in the community, what sports were going on, what music events were going on, what speech and debate events were going on, and just the number of ways where our students reached out to community members and really supported our community. So you'll be getting your certificates in the mail. If you were here, we would be handing them out. But we just want to say thank you. So I guess we'll do a sitting round of applause so you can hear us. But if we can acknowledge the great work our student trustees have done this year. And with that being said, I know that Waverly couldn't be here. And so we'll start with those who are here. I see that Claire is here and Malone is here. So Claire, I don't see... Oh, there's Eric. So Claire and Eric, do you want to give us a report about Seeley Swan?
Yes, we can definitely do that.
Yep.
All right. Hi there, my name is Claire Kovach. I'm one of the Seeley Swan student trustees, and my partner is Eric Lorenz. We just want to say happy May to everybody. Seeley Swan started the last block of the year, and time is going fast. The schedule is packed. Everyone is excited for summer, and the seniors are excited to graduate. Tomorrow, the 12th, is Seeley Swan's Discovery Day. Students will be doing community service work, including trail building and fencing, and then they'll be hiking to Tupper's Lake. And in Montana, lunch is going to be served with manic beef. So special thanks to them. We are in the final weeks of track and field. Seeley Swan has been having a great year. Many of our athletes are ranked top 10 in the state. Tournaments start this weekend, and the rest of the Blackhawks meets will be at Big Sky Stadium. After each meet, the team, the track team averages about 20 personal records, which is the whole point of competing, to get better, and we're super proud of that. Also, golf is on the home stretch. Next Monday through Wednesday, they finish up their season in Bozeman for state. Seven of our golf athletes have qualified for state. I'll turn the rest of it over to Eric.
Hi, I'm Eric. Our student council has been busy sprucing up the Frisbee Golf Course. Our Leo's Club students are in council, are in, are both, sorry, excuse me. They have joined to help set up the Frisbee Golf Course, too. We have now an 18-hole course for Seeley Swan. It will be put in next Wednesday for a fall tournament after our Discovery Day. I guess this Wednesday, my bad. Last Friday was our school prom. The junior class did great. A great job planning and setting up the prom. The theme was a spring ball. This year, we, me and Claire, are actually the prom king and queen. We had a great time, and there was a great turnout. The Leo's Club has been active in our community. Last Sunday, members swept the seniors' citizen parking lot, but it was pouring down rain, but it was worth it because the Leo's advisors brought cookies. They have rescheduled their annual highway cleanup to May 23. Previously, it was also canceled, or it was canceled due to head weather. And lastly, Claire and I are both seniors, and will be graduating in three weeks. And it has been an honor to represent our school and as student trustees. This responsibility has been a great experience. The graduation will be at Seeley Swan High School on June 6. Thank you.
Thank you to you both. And we miss being able to see each of the trustees and especially the trips up to Seeley in the fall and the spring to meet Eric and Claire in person. And congratulations on your prom royalty. And I think we have Malone. I don't see Daisy, but Malone, do you have a report for us from Sentinel?
Yes, can you hear me okay?
Yes, just fine.
Perfect, okay. So once again, my name is Malone, and my co-trustee Daisy is actually not able to attend tonight. So I'll just be giving the report by myself. As we wrap up the school year, Sentinel students are working hard. This week marks the end of the final block with periods 1 through 3. And starting next week, students will begin their final block with periods 4 through 6, which will take us to the end of the school year. But until then, there is plenty going on at Sentinel. In sports news, our softball team continues to have a strong season. Last week, the Varsity Girls beat Capital in Big Sky, although they lost to Helena. And this week, they're up against Russell, Great Falls, and Hellgate. Our tennis team has also had an eventful season. Last week, they faced Hellgate on Tuesday. And last Saturday, they traveled up to Kalispell to face Flathead and Glacier, but were rained out amidst their first matches. Now our tennis team is gearing up for divisionals against Big Sky, Hellgate, and Butte next Thursday and Friday. Track and field is busy as well. Last week, they faced Helena High, and this week, they'll compete against Glacier. And this will be the last meet before divisionals. Sentinel Lacrosse is in full swing as well. Moving on to our many clubs, activities, and school events. Last Saturday, Key Club put on prom for juniors and seniors at the fairgrounds. Students were happy that this event still took place despite COVID restrictions, and it was just a great night overall. In other news, this week is Spirit Week at Sentinel. Monday was Color Day, and today is Pattern Day. For the remainder of the week, we'll have Hawaiian Day, Decades Day, and finally, Purple and Gold Day. Student Government has planned fun events for this week: a barbecue yesterday, a dodgeball match tonight, a trivia night on Wednesday, and finally, an event at Washington Grizzly Stadium with Hellgate and Big Sky. Amnesty International is wrapping up the year by celebrating all the great work they have done and announcing new leadership for next year. Students are also busy with AP testing, which will wrap up soon. Thank you so much for hearing our report tonight, and have a great night.
Thank you so much, Malone. It sounds like you got everyone at Sentinel is finishing very strong, so thank you. I believe that Mariposa from Willard couldn't be with us tonight, and I'm not seeing Jaden or Ashlyn from Big Sky. And I think Mr. Lodge might have the report from Hellgate that Waverly submitted in writing. Is that correct? Okay.
That is correct. I'm very happy to read this for Waverly. She writes, "As the school year winds down, track, softball, and tennis are getting ready for state at the end of the month. This week, we are doing Spirit Week and trying to get in as much fun traditions and activities that we missed out on this fall and winter due to COVID. Tonight, we are doing our annual tug-of-war competition. And on Friday, for the first time, all MCPS high schools will be competing in a spirit competition at Washington Grizzly Stadium. This Saturday, the Hellgate seniors are hosting prom at Hellgate in the courtyard. And over the past few weeks, AP and IB students have been taking their exams. The NHS, the National Honor Society, welcomed the junior class into the club, and NHS cleaned the courtyard for prom. SAVE continues to strive to make Hellgate more sustained and environmentally friendly by setting up composting and recycling around the school along with our newly-built greenhouse. Key Club held a highway cleanup and are looking to recruit new members for next year. BPA competed in Nationals at the end of April. And student government elections for student body vice president and VP, senior class president and VP, and junior class president, VP, and sophomore class president and vice president are happening throughout the week. And you can look at Hellgate Student Government's YouTube channel to look at all the nomination videos. Waverly would like to take this opportunity to thank all the teachers and staff for their hard work and positive attitude despite this very unconventional year. So thank you for your time and have a fabulous rest of your spring."
And we'll make sure that I'll thank Waverly when we send over her certificate for providing it. And thanks to those trustees who could be here and stay as long as you want. But we know this time of the year in particular is the busiest time of year for seniors. So feel free to jump off whenever is appropriate. But thank you for those reports. And then we move on to announcements from Dr. Watson.
Okay, thank you, Chair Holland. I've got several announcements this evening and a request for some graduation help from the trustees. So I'll start off with a brief COVID report. As of last week, at the end of the week, we had two reported COVID cases on Monday when we started the week, one active case. So our numbers remain fairly low, which is a good sign for us. We know that when we have increased cases, it means more students are out as close contacts. So when we have low cases, we see less students that are missing school due to close contacts. On the vaccine front, just a couple of things to report about vaccines. The number that we've been watching on the county website is the percentage of 15- to 19-year-olds that have received at least one dose. And this includes any 15- to 19-year-old in the county. So it's a little bit broader than just our students. But right now, it's at 37.2%. Last week, it was at 36%. So it's come up just a little bit, but we're starting to see a slowdown in the number of students in that age range getting vaccines. Total eligible for all Missoula County and everyone in the county that's received at least one vaccine, it's at 59.7%. So we have a ways to go to catch up with the rest of the county. We also announced a collaborative plan with Granite Pharmacy, as well as several of the pediatricians in town. We've announced a collaborative vaccine clinic that will happen on May 20th and 21st. That is for students in the age level of 12 to 15 years old. We've made that announcement public to our parents. We have parents signing up for it already. And then also, other students in the county are also invited. With the help of the local pediatricians, we got the word out to quite a few other students in the county if they, they probably got a message from their pediatrician. So we're welcoming any child between the age of 12 to 15 to our clinic, which is on May 20th and 21st of this month. A couple of staff celebrations that... Just following up from last time. So at the last board meeting, I talked to you about an award that's called the SHAPE Award, and it's the statewide PE Teacher of the Year. And so we had two PE teachers in our district. Heather Chaney was the high school PE Teacher of the Year for all high school teachers in the state. Charlie Struna was the middle school PE Teacher of the Year for all PE teachers in the state. And I think this must be a first, but we also have an elementary PE Teacher of the Year. Megan Schrader at Hawthorne is the elementary PE Teacher of the Year. So Missoula County Public Schools got all three of them this year, which is just outstanding. In addition to that, one other award I wanted to tell you about, the Mary Frances Shreve Award for Teaching Excellence. This is given once a year by the College of Education at UM. It honors outstanding teaching, outstanding teacher, one outstanding teacher each year in the state of Montana. And this year went to Mary Beth Jordanas, kindergarten teacher at Hawthorne. End of year announcements. So just a couple of things as we wrap up the year. We've talked before to the board about summer school. We are still planning on running summer school in June. We've put the signups out. Just to report to the board, we have about approximately 10, I'm sorry, approximately 20 to 40 students at each of the nine elementary schools and the 6-8 schools. Between 20 and 40 students that have signed up for summer school at each school. So that's very encouraging. We know that that's a good way to catch up some kids that might have missed some vital instruction throughout the year or during the COVID shutdown. Couple of other end-of-year things. This Thursday, really excited to celebrate our Native American students with the Native American Student Senior Dinner, the graduating seniors. This year, we get to celebrate 54 Native American graduates, including trustee Oldperson's son will be honored as well this Thursday as we celebrate all of our Native American students that are graduating. And finally, the graduation, the big graduation days that we might need your help with, if you're willing to volunteer to be part of the ceremony. So I'll tell you what the dates are and the times. And then if you'll just let me know sometime in the next couple of days if you can be there. We need to plan out the size of the stage and the number of chairs to have on stage. So if you're able to be there, we would welcome you there. So Willard graduation is on Thursday, June 3, at 5:00. And this, all of these graduations I'm going to tell you about all happen at Washington Grizzly Stadium, with the exception of the last one. So Willard graduation, June 3, 5:00. On June 4, which is a Friday, we will celebrate Big Sky at 9:00, Hellgate at noon, and Sentinel at 3:00. and Sentinel at 3:00. And then on June 6th, as Claire and Eric just mentioned, June 6th, which is a Sunday, at 1:00 is the Sealy Swan High School graduation at Sealy Swan. So, if you're able to attend any or all of those, we would love to have you there. Just because of the complexities of graduation, we're not doing any graduation robes this year for the trustees, so just wear what you would normally wear to a nice event, and that would be great. But, we would welcome you there at the graduation ceremonies. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, we move on to 8A1, under New Business Finance Operations and Maintenance. It's a request to approve a lease extension for a portion of Cold Springs Elementary. It's an elementary action item, and I'll turn it over to you, Pat.
Thank you Chair Holland. So, this lease is a one-year lease that began last August, and it's scheduled to terminate this upcoming August. The current tenant, Studio M, has requested an extension of that lease, and we're recommending a short extension of actually 11 months. The background reference is a year, but we shortened it to 11 months, which would run it through July of next year, July of 2022. In addition to the extension of time, we've recommended, and the tenant has agreed to, an extension of space. So, we'd go from three classrooms to six. And really, for us as a district, the intent there is to try and maximize the use of that space. If it's used for three classrooms, it can be easily used for six, from our standpoint. And so, that increased the monthly rental by $500 for those additional three classrooms, which again, would run through July of next year. The piece to the lease that's intact is that the space would remain available to the district if necessary during the day. And so, we tried to maintain some of the flexibilities that the board was concerned about when we approached the board with this lease last year, and so those flexibilities remain intact. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Anyone have any questions for Pat? Trustee Ev. Garris?
Just curious why 11 and not 12 months?
So, what we wanted to do is if we did want to take that property back, if the lease ended in August, it would put quite a bit of pressure to get it ready for use if we did need to use the space. And so, July gave us a month wiggle room to do that.
Any other questions? Not seeing any. Then, the recommendation is for a motion to approve a one-year lease, well, an 11-month lease extension, and to expand the leased space to Studio M, as contemplated in the attached addendum to the lease. And is there such a motion? Moved by trustee Lorenzen and seconded by trustee Ev. Garris. Is there any board discussion?
Pat, so with the, you mentioned if we wanted to do anything with that space. So, does that mean, is this kind of a timeline of the whole building, our public, our, what is it called? You know, our buildings? What we were going to do, what we talked about the last meeting. Thanks.
You know, the property will be part of that conversation, yes. And so, the use that might come into play is really, we're not contemplating a use by the district, but it's more in the category of you never know in light of the COVID goings-on. So, but the building itself will be part of that evaluation, for sure.
Any other board discussion? I just want to say thanks to Pat and everyone who worked on this project, because it's nice to have space being used for education-related purpose, which Dance is always supported, you know, by I know Spark Arts and others. So, thank you for working out the details on that. And any public comment? I'm not seeing any hands being raised. So, all K-12 trustees in favor of the motion to approve an 11-month lease extension and expansion of the lease space to Studio M, as contemplated in the attached addendum to the lease, please indicate by raising your hand. And I was just checking for trustee Decker. And so, that is unanimous as to all K-12 trustees present. And then we move on to 2, which is to authorize engagement of professional engineering and design firms. And Pat, I think we've seen this on some type of regular basis, but I don't know if it's annual, biannual. I don't know the timing of it all, but if you could explain, you know, the reason why this request is being made.
You bet. Thank you. So, we look at about a five-year period to issue a statement of qualifications or a request for qualifications for engineering and design firms. And what we've done in the past, and certainly did to a large degree with bond projects, is we've retained professional engineers and design firms to assist with projects. And the purpose here is to qualify professionals in advance of when we would need them. And so, these professionals that have been qualified through this process would be available to work on projects as they come up. And these are smaller dollar projects, defined as $2 million or less in our processes, which is a little higher than it was the last go-around, but in recognition of inflation, that's where we came up with the $2 million. We utilized the work of a committee to evaluate all of these proposals from all these categories that you see here. So, I'd like to thank the members of the committee. Burley McWilliams, who organized and led the effort from the O&amp;M Department, Vinnie Jamona, Amy Shattuck, and myself from the district staff, and then Jeff, trustee Ev. Garris, as one of the trustees on the committee. So, we spent a better part of a day evaluating the submittals from companies in all of these categories, and we scored those submittals in the, using the rubric that's referenced in the background section, based upon qualification of personnel, capability to meet time and project budget requirements, location, workload, related experience, and current work for the school district. And so, I'm happy to request that the trustees approve the selection of these firms under these various categories to provide services under contracts that we would enter into with these companies. And finally, before I ask any questions, the contracts that we sign with these companies are open-ended, and they only come into play to the extent we have a project. But, when we have a project, we'll request proposals, and we'll ensure that any of these companies would have availability to perform as requested. And that's the advantage of having multiple professionals in each of these categories. So, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Pat? Trustee Decker?
Thanks, Pat. This is really similar, of course, to like the process that we went through, like repeatedly around the bond projects and request for qualifications for companies. I'm just wondering whether, you know, whether any of these companies are like brand-new to the district, or if there's anything notable about any of them that people in the community should be aware of, or if they're all mostly companies that we've worked with before.
Yeah, so, they're mostly companies we've worked with before. There are a couple that are new, and you'll see repeat companies or professionals under the various categories because they provide multiple engineering services, as well as design services. We have one of the, under the owner's construction representative, the, we offered to retain up to two, all right, to identify up to two, I should say. And we had a submittal from our bond owner's representative, who helped us significantly with our bond projects. We also received a submittal by, from a company in Denver that has some ties to Montana that, and again, both companies were qualified, and that's part of the selection criteria. And as trustee Decker mentioned, these, this process is similar to the process we use with the bond projects. The distinction would be, in the bond projects, we would be retaining one for a specific project, and here, we're retaining up to four in various categories. And I think what's interesting to point out, since you mentioned it trustee Decker, is that a lot of, several of these categories, we received less than the number we are looking for. So, we are shooting for four in most of them, and you can see that some places, we had two and one. And I think a part of it is the volume of work that's going on out there, and, but we did receive really excellent submittals from all of these professionals.
Any other questions? I think you've answered mine more or less, but I'm guessing that special services or special systems is a fairly specific kind of project, or requires special skillset, and that's why we only got one?
That's correct. That's a tougher one typically to fill.
Thanks. Any other questions? So, the recommendation is that there is a motion to authorize engagement of the above firms on an as-needed basis to assist with capital improvement projects of limited size and scope. And is there a motion? Moved by trustee Wake. Is there a second? Seconded by trustee Ev. Garris. Is there any board discussion? See none? Any public comment? Seeing no hands being raised, then all trustees in favor of the motion to authorize engagement of the above firms that are identified on page two of the agenda, on an as-needed basis to assist with capital improvement projects of limited size and scope, please indicate yes by raising your hand.
Marcia, I have to abstain.
Okay. And that is all trustees present, with the exception of trustee Lorenzen, who is abstaining from voting. And I don't know if you want to identify why, but I'm assuming you have some connection.
My husband's one of these bad boys.
Okay. I noticed there was a last name in there. Thank you for explaining that. And then, we come to another topic that we see on a more regular basis than every five years, which is to approve the purchase of student and staff device replacements. And so, Pat, could you give us some background on an item that we see about this time of year, every year, or maybe every two years?
No, thank you Chair Holland. That's exactly right. It's every year. So, we have two levies, one in the elementary and one in the high school, and they're annual levies with the intent of purchasing replacement devices. That's their primary intent. And so, so our IT staff evaluates the need, and they have a very nicely detailed replacement schedule for both staff and student devices that they utilize. And in addition to that, have been working towards a one-to-one computer-to-student ratio for, boy, quite a number of years now. So, they're always making progress in that respect as well. And so, quite a bit of background. Work goes into the preparation for these submittals, and we used a national purchasing site where the state of Montana is a participant, and we can go through that purchasing site called NASBO to identify vendors to submit proposals. And you'll see, we received two proposals, including one from ITC here, here based in Missoula. And that's a company we've used in the past and have had very good luck and a good relationship with them with regard to these purchases. So, the recommendation here is to select ITC for purchases of replacement devices up to that $414,000 number. You'll see it's broken down between staff and student devices, with the bulk being student devices. And what I'll maybe point out is the primary purchase is Chromebooks, and Chromebooks for students run about, under this bid, $250. And we are looking to purchase close to 1,000 of them as part of this bid. And so, the significance there is that for any trustees that have looked at these bids in the past, the prices are much more affordable for devices. So, in the past, we'd purchased desktops and occasionally laptops, but the introduction of Chromebooks and similar devices have made the ability to get to a one-to-one ratio much more attainable. And so, those are more affordable, and also, the largest purchase is part of this planned purchase of ITC devices. Happy to answer any questions.
Anyone have any questions? Not seeing any. Trustee Vogel, and then trustee Mercer?
I remember in the fall, we were buying a whole bunch of devices, and I believe that ship was stuck somewhere in the Pacific. So, hopefully, it made it. And how does that number play in? Are we purchasing less now because we purchased so many new ones with the COVID money?
You know, I, I'm not sure, but I would say no. So, we purchased, we used different funding source in the fall to purchase about 500, over 500 Chromebooks. And so, that purchase definitely addressed the remote learning requirements and was intended to meet the number of students that were learning from home during the hybrid learning model, and certainly following last year's late closures in the spring. These are, these purchases represent quite a bit of replacement. So, these are items that were already intended to be replaced. So, they were already on the schedule to be replaced. Now, some are new to meet the one-to-one ratio, but I think the bulk of them are, yeah, replacements. And so, these replacements look both at end-of-life Chromebooks of about 230 for this year, and end-of-life Chromebooks for the start of 20, or for 2021 of 703. So, that's the bulk of that purchase. So, I'd say most of them are end-of-life type replacements. And I think the difference between the desktop and the Chromebook is their longevity, probably, if I were to identify a difference there, and they're a three-to-five-year piece of equipment. And I know for staff desktops, we get quite a bit more out of those, since my mind's quite a bit older than that. But, so this'll, this'll both be the end-of-life replacement, as well as some additional purchases.
Trustee Mercer, did you have a question?
Yeah, I think that basically answers it. So, how, did we lose any unusual amount due to loaning them out during COVID? And then, other question, what does using a vendor get us versus just buying them from Dell or whatever?
Yeah, so there has been spoilage and damage as a result of loaning them out to staff. The IT department, though, for most items on the Chromebook, are able to replace and fix them at a pretty modest price, and it's keyboards and it's screens. I don't know the exact number, but we can get that. And it's a great question about purchasing direct. We haven't had much luck going direct through a supplier for a variety of things. So, we work with vendors or means to purchase many devices. And so, Dell computers are one, and I'm not thinking of another that was at the top of my head, but I know this isn't the only one where we're not able to go direct. It's just, it's how they do it, and it's a bit frustrating. But, we at least have somebody who's local that we can work with, which was, I think, important when that ship of supply was heading this direction, and they were looking out for us and getting them our way. It did take quite a while to come our direction, but it is good to have a local support person.
Trustee Vogel?
Thank you. One more. Do you have a plan for what you're going to do with the old Chromebooks? We have a similar situation at our school in Potomac.
Yeah, so, the ones we repair, we repair, and we'll reuse and reissue. The ones that reach their end of life, it's more difficult with Chromebooks. So, we've had, and Hatton knows more about this than I do, but we've had some ability to reuse or reissue the end-of-life desktops and laptops. So, I don't think the same possibility exists for these Chromebooks. So, what we've typically done with completely depleted, depreciated computer devices is try to recycle them. And that's also sort of a business that's limited to devices where they can pull enough metals out of it to make it worth their while. And I'm not sure if the Chromebooks fit in that bill. It's usually the copper and the other metals that they pull out of the equipment. So, Chromebooks may not have the same recyclability as the other devices.
Any other questions for Pat? So, the recommendation, and just as is indicated in the background, this funding is coming from the technology fund, from Esser Funds, so it's not coming out of the general fund? Is that correct?
That's correct. It'll be partly the tech fund as part of the replacement plan, and partly Esser for any that are COVID-related equipment purchase.
So, the recommendation is for a motion to approve the purchase of student and staff device replacements from Information Technology Corp. for $414,320. Is there such a motion? Moved by trustee Lorenzen and seconded by trustee Ev. Garris. Is there any board discussion? I'll just make one. It's amazing how prices have dropped from when I first bought my first Mac computer, which about costs the same as probably a card. Anyway, so, thank you to the IT department for looking into trying to come up with reasonable replacement value. Any other comments? Any public comment? Not seeing any. Then, all trustees in favor of the motion to approve the purchase of student and staff device replacements from Information Technology Corp. or ITC for $414,320, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to all trustees present at the meeting. Then, we move to B1, which is to Then we move to B1, which is to approve the personnel report. And we'll be talking about the amended personnel report, which has been placed at each trustee's seat. I don't know if trustee Decker has it or has access to it, but in any case, Dave and Dr. Watson, do you want to offer any explanation for why it's a little thicker than usual?
Yeah, I'll start and then let Dave add to it. So this is the time of year when we not only are looking at all the staff members that are on one-year-only contracts, but also looking at, looking forward to next year and which staff members are being reelected. So you'll see the report's broken down by a couple of different categories. And probably the thickest part of the report is those staff members that we're notifying that they're coming back next year. So this is a process that happens every May. This year happens to be a little bit thicker because when we started the Missoula Online Academy, we ended up hiring a lot of extra teachers in our school district. So you'll see that referenced in here a couple of different places. I would say, and Dave can attest to this, I think our retirement numbers are pretty typical from year to year. We don't see a huge increase in retirement, but those are also referenced in here. So if you've got 20 or 30 teachers that retire every year, then you have to go through a process to replace those as well. So it's an important time of year for us. Dave's office has been very, very busy this week with regards to the personnel process that we go through each spring to advertise and interview for these positions in district first before they go out of district. So Dave, I don't know if you want to add anything, but just wanted to let the board know that the May personnel report is typically a lot larger than any other month.
Thank you, Rob. Yeah, I would just point out that it is much larger. This report does still include the kind of routine matters of retirements, resignations, hires and such, but it also lists over, as Rob was indicating, 700-plus tenured and non-tenured staff. So we are required by state law to notify all tenured and non-tenured staff by June 1st in writing of their reelection or termination. And if we don't do that by June 1st and they receive written notice, they will automatically be renewed or reelected for the next year. So that is what we're bringing you tonight and I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions from anybody? Not seeing any hands being raised. So let me just, okay, I'm just making sure I got to the language. So the recommendation is that there is a motion to approve the attached personnel report that's attached to our agenda and is described as the reelection and/or termination of tenured and non-tenured teachers and administrators as identified in the amended report. Is there such a motion? Moved by trustee Evgaris. Is there a second? Seconded by trustee Lorenzen. Is there any board discussion? Seeing no hands being raised anywhere. And any public comment? Not seeing any hands raised. Is that correct, Hatton?
That's correct.
Thanks. And so there's a seconded motion on the table. So all trustees in favor of the motion to approve the attached personnel report, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to all trustees present at the meeting. Let me move back to my other agenda. And so the next topic is to approve the first reading of the MCPS strategic plan, which is found beginning on page 60. We talked, Dr. Watson and I talked about how to caption this and really we decided to make it parallel to when we're adopting board policy. So this would be a first reading with any, and it can come back as a first reading if there's any significant comments or suggested changes. But otherwise, if there's minor changes, we would send it out for public comment and it would come back again for adoption at a second reading. Does that make sense to everybody? See mostly nods. So with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Watson and I don't, no, Deb Silk's not.
She's not, no. So not going to go through very much this evening, other than to say, you know, there's just been kind of a long process, probably longer than any of us thought it was going to be when we started the process, but it is an important process. I do want you to know that this is a living document. It's not something that gets written and put on a shelf. It's really a living document that we use at the administrative level extensively as we start planning and thinking about what's going to happen in future years. I appreciate the time that we took on the core ideology. The core values and the core ideology, I think, are fundamental to our work. I feel like over several iterations and several conversations that our consultant, Deborah Silk with MTSBA, really captured the basis of the feedback that we got. So appreciate that. I also want to point the board to one other item on here and if you look at, let's see, maybe the page number, part three, which is the planning horizon.
Page 63.
Page 63. So this is probably the most important piece for the administrative team. We take, what we do at the next step is we take these goal areas. So you see goal area one, enhanced learning opportunities. Goal area two, trusted and valued staff. Goal area three, inclusion and equity. Goal area four, community engagement. Those become our, those become our working goals for the next three to five years. We will develop specific strategic objectives. We'll develop action plans under each one of those goals. We will bring those back to the board. So my vision would be that we would have at least twice a year, we'd have a report on the action plans and the strategic objectives under each goal area. So it's not something that, like I said before, is written and goes on a shelf. It's actually something that we use each year. While the goal areas are not going to change, the strategic objectives underneath each goal area could change. So you can imagine if we're working towards enhanced learning opportunities, we're probably going to have several different objectives to reach that goal. Some of those objectives are short-term objectives that could be done in one year or two years. Some of them are longer-term objectives, but we will report back to the board on not only the strategic objectives, but the action plans we've established to fulfill those strategic objectives. So that's really the next stage in this. But before we can get to that, what we'd like from the board is an approval process of the overall plan so that we can start those next steps. I think as I talked to Chair Holland about the process, I think it is important to make sure that we've given the public time to look this over and give us feedback on it before it's officially approved. So I kind of like the first reading, second reading process. I think it gives us time to take a look at this. I would anticipate bringing this back for second reading, probably at the first meeting in June.
Any questions for Dr. Watson? Trustee Olperson?
One of the things that started my interest in the school board was the elementary boundary study. How, does this, will this help fall in line with that and include in a middle school boundary study?
Yeah, that's an excellent question. And, you know, sometimes you'll see goal areas that involve operations. We don't necessarily have that goal area, but that particular strategic objective of looking at our schools, determining, you know, where the pinch points are in terms of enrollment, that could fit under community engagement. Goal area four, I could see it as a strategic objective there. It could also fit under goal area three, inclusion and equity. So there's a couple of different spots for that. But those immediate imperatives that I identified for you last year, things like the boundary study or the later start time for high school, all of those won't be lost in any of this. We just need to figure out where they fit within the goal areas.
Any other questions? Trustee Mercer?
So is the part three then part of the strategic plan? This, that seems sort of new to me. I've seen all this other before at the meetings, but that seems new.
Yeah, so trustee Mercer, the part three was developed in our last meeting with the community. So it is the newest piece of all this. That is true. And it's built on some of the things that we've talked about before. It's built on some of the conversations we had last year. There were a couple iterations of this. As I recall, for example, I, you know, I think inclusion and equity were two separate goal areas and we combined them into one. I don't think initially we had a community engagement goal area, but then it came out through some of the discussions and so we added that. So it is relatively new. At the last session, the last community session we had with our planning group, and I believe there were some board members on that call, we, there were quite a few community members. Deborah Silk identified the goal areas and then she split us into groups to identify some of the priority strategies. I would just caution you that the priority strategies are just first blush. We will have to take those under consideration at the administrative level and come back to you with the actual strategic objectives to reach each goal area. Some of these will turn into strategic objectives, but I think what you're approving, in my mind, is the goal areas. That's probably the most important thing.
Any other questions? Trustee Decker?
I'm just wondering on a scale of kind of not very satisfied to extremely satisfied, how satisfied you, Superintendent Watson, feel with the amount of parent engagement, engagement of parents who are not like otherwise affiliated with a community group or in a leadership kind of role? And I ask that specifically because the process got started before the pandemic and then kind of picked up where it left off. And because of that, I think, took a really long time, but also kind of fell a little short. And so I'm just, I'm wondering how satisfied we feel that we've actually done that engagement process in a way that is deep and really reflects where the community is right now today?
That's, it's an excellent question. I would answer it in a couple of ways. You know, I've been here now in this position and in this community for two years. And even though COVID took a big chunk of those two years, I have had the opportunity to talk with a variety of people. You remember last year before I, before COVID, I had the learning and listening sessions where I talked to over 100 different community members. What I would tell you is that some of the same themes that I've heard the last two years are reflected in the strategic plan. So I do think it captures some of the big themes that we've heard from our community members. On the flip side of that, I would say that we never probably are going to capture all the voices and I know that's a frustration and a concern. But I would also say that, like I said earlier, this doesn't go on a shelf and live there. We have the opportunity now to really go to our community and say, here's what we're working with, here's where we believe our goal areas are, help us define what this looks like in the next five years regarding strategic objectives to reach those goals. So I am satisfied in the fact that I do believe the words on this document, while they may not be perfect in terms of wordsmithing, the words on the document do capture what I believe are the most important things to our community at this point, based on my experience so far.
Any other trustee questions? I have one grammatical question. There are a couple of typos in it. Should I talk to you or Hatton?
Yeah, for sure. Let me know, let me know about the typos.
Since we're about to release it to the public as a public school system.
Yep, let me know about the typos. We'll get it fixed. I caught one of them, but let me know about them and we will.
Yeah, there's just, I only saw two. I mean, there's not many.
Okay, perfect. And we'll get it fixed before we post it out for public comment.
Thanks. And just to trustee Mercer's point, I was able to participate in the community involvement and there were teachers involved in the group I did. I know it came very quickly on the heels of when we, as a board, were doing it. So it was, you know, it was a lot of talking about strategic planning, but for me, since I won't be part of the process from now on, I really appreciated the opportunity to participate. And that really is where the part that you're looking at is less familiar. That was part of what I was, had the opportunity to weigh in on, so thank you for that. Any other questions? Let me just, so the recommendation is to approve the first reading of the MCPS strategic plan, knowing that there can be modifications made after public input and that either there will be a second reading or even a second first reading, depending on the nature and the amount of, is that a question or an emotion?
I'd like to make a different motion.
Okay, go ahead.
I make a motion that we form an ad hoc committee of the board with people who are particularly interested in this, in vision of the board. And they review it together as a group and come back and present to the board as a whole their impressions of it and any suggestions in lieu of adopting it for first reading.
Second. And so with that motion seconded, I would ask for a clarification. How many individuals would you anticipate being on that committee?
Well, it has to be less than five, or five or fewer. I think there's a real strong vision. Some of the people in this room have more interest than others and I think we could form a committee of the people who really want input. I tried to participate in this process and I just felt like there was so much process and maybe not so much input. And I guess as a trustee, I was frustrated that I was thrown into a group with, there was no distinction trustee voice, non-trustee voice. And this is intended to be the vision of this board, today's board of people, the vision we present to our administration. And I just, I felt pushed along by the process and I feel like if we go into first reading, we're just going to keep getting pushed. So I just, I don't feel confident that this reflects the board of elected trustees here who are supposed to adopt it. So I would just would like some feedback. There's people here whose point of view I really admire and I want to hear their opinion of this. And the trouble with the big event was that you just got put into groups and they deliberately separated the trustees and we couldn't find out what the other trustees thought. And that's really the most important thing. I don't want to vote till I know what every trustee on this board feels. And I think this ad hoc committee could probably get the most interested and the most eloquent trustees to do that work and come back to us so we could talk amongst ourselves.
So I'm thinking rather than a clarifying point, as you pointed out, we can't have enough to make a quorum. That was actually also a comment to explain why you made the motion, too?
Yes.
Okay, yeah. I mean, it took on a larger life and I want to appreciate that it was a comment in support of the motion that was made. So thank you for that. And is there any, oh, trustee Decker?
Thanks. I would just say that in seconding this motion and supporting it, I just want to really state that this is not in any way a critique or a, an attempt to radically change direction that has resulted from the process, but to really like get on the inside of it as a board. Because if this is the strategic plan that this board of trustees is going to adopt, it'll drive many things in the district for quite some time. And it's really important that the board of trustees feel not just okay with it, but very invested in it and that it makes a statement about the district that makes sense from that perspective and has the input of all of those community stakeholders and parents. I think, I feel like that's where I'm coming from in being interested in this opportunity to just take a deeper dive with a committee, to just really, you know, own it.
Thanks. Any other trustee comments? Trustee Mercer?
I think I support the motion. My only concern is that, I think I went to all of these. I know I went to the last two of these. And there were parents talking that felt, and what they expressed to me frustrated and rushed and unheard by the process. To trustee Decker's point about whether we are satisfied with the involvement of parents broadly, in some way, the proof's in the pudding. I would like to have it out for public comment and get those specific comments. So whether we do the committee first, I guess I'm fine with, but I'm also looking forward and I guess I want to say to the community that when we put it out to public comment, for me at least, that's very real and I'm totally open to changing things based upon that and having further conversations based on that. So I just would encourage, when the opportunity comes, anyone who hasn't been heard to write us, for sure.
Any other public comment? I just have one comment. I too felt I I too felt like it was a bit rushed and in part it was odd because of COVID. But when we had our board session, it was at the end of a very long night anyway. And as you'll recall, I think we we talked about one part fairly exhaustively and we're almost into wordsmithing type of conversations and then moved to a second topic, which then got captured and pushed back out again. And so I was looking at at the document and there were things that I wish I could have weighed in on a little more. So I appreciate the motion that has been made because as Deborah Silk indicated, this is a trustee document. This is something that the board as a whole, you know, creates and adopts it. And so it's not an administrative side of things. Of course, we need their input, but I appreciate the modification to the motion because there are a few things I would like to weigh in on, too, but now I won't. So I'll leave it up to the committee to do so. And but I do appreciate that. And I I also agree with trustee Mercer. It would be kind of nice to start getting some public feedback somehow, but maybe the committee can work more quickly rather than less quickly. So there's a document that can be sent to the public, you know, by next school year at least. So or at least by June, July 1st, when Dr. Watson's new new year of leadership starts. So that's just my two cents. But anyhow, any other pub or board comment? Any public comment? I'm not seeing any hands up. Is that correct, Hatton?
That's correct.
Thank you. And so we have a seconded motion and I think Tracy's taking notes and I should have written it down more, but trustee Lorenzen, do you mind stating your motion so everyone is clear about what the board is voting on?
Okay, I move we do not adopt this for first reading, but instead we form an ad hoc committee of seven or fewer, five or fewer trustees to read it and read it together and present the board with their review of it and any suggested changes.
So is everyone clear on the motion? I'm seeing either heads nodding or no one disagreeing. Okay, and we've had public comment and board comments. So all trustees in favor of the motion, as was stated by trustee Lorenzen, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to all trustees present. And then we come to D1. It doesn't seem like I should be doing D1. It seems like it's really awkward to do D1. But I will speak to trustee Sturbis. I know that she also ran for school board at Target Range and was reelected. So congratulations to her for her continued involvement and serving as a trustee in public education and for her three years of service on this board because she brought a very important point of view from one of our, well, two actually, on our and Target Range. And so I really want to thank her for her participation. I'm sure we'll recognize her more formally, probably with a plaque in the mail, because we've been mailing out a lot of plaques in the mail during COVID because it's harder to get them to people. I was going to deliver them in person and it became harder and harder to do so, but I just want to really make sure we we thank trustee Sturbis for her three years of service because the whole time she was serving on MCPS's board, she was also on Target Range's board and going to two, more than one school board meeting every month. I think she was going to three. So so I don't know if you want to add anything?
I do, and I can take over D1 if that's okay with you. Yes, thank you, Chair Holland. I have special opportunity to recognize two trustees this evening. And as Chair Holland said, trustee Sturbis, so from our administration and our faculty and our staff, we we would really thank trustee Sturbis for her time. I've really appreciated her commitment to her role on the board. And you probably knew this, but a lot of folks in the public did not know this, that she was serving on the Target Range Board at the same time. And it's amazing because she was either present or she was zoomed in to so many meetings that that we had over the over the course of the last two years that I've been here. And so and the other thing that was amazing is when we were doing our school visits last fall, I think trustee Sturbis showed up to every single school visit, even though she's a considered a high school trustee, she still came to the the elementary school visits. And when I when I thanked her for all that time she that she gave up or that she committed, all all she would ever tell me is she'd say, well, I have the time and I really like to learn about new things. So I I thought that was just great. It's it speaks to her commitment to our schools and our students. So I I will be, when I when I get a chance to see her again, I'll be thanking her for her time and her dedication to our board. Can I can I go on?
Yeah. Because I don't have anything else to say.
Okay, perfect. And before I do that, I know that Casey Blue also is on the on the call this evening. And I asked Casey if she wanted to say anything about the outgoing trustees. So Casey, is there anything you want to share about trustee Sturbis before I go on?
Yeah, I just echo Dr. Watson's gratitude for her, you know, having that insider knowledge for the community that she was representing and serving and making sure that we coordinated well as a whole community. Yeah, we we definitely appreciate her measured responses and her calm and quiet demeanor and her thoughtfulness and and we appreciate the time she gave.
Thanks, Casey. Okay, so almost immediately when I took this position, I was impressed with the dedication and the professionalism of the board. No doubt that that this demeanor that you all have has a lot to do with Chair Holland's guidance and her leadership over the last many, many years. I'm going to reflect back for a minute over 12 years if I can. And this is kind of hard, but I did add up some numbers. So I'm I'm getting close to 280 school board meetings over 12 years. That might be a little bit short because I know there were committee meetings as well, but 280 school board meetings. She served with 34 different individual board members over those years. And last but not least, three different superintendents, which is not easy to do. So just throw that in there. In that time, Marsha really has helped us lead many initiatives. For example, the previous strategic plan, the Achievement for All strategic plan, I know Marsha was involved in 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 helping the district get through that and lead that process. Not to mention $158 million bond initiative, which, leading up to that, there must have been many, many meetings to get ready to to talk to the community about that. But also after the bond was passed, many, many meetings, countless school plan review meetings, selection of architects, engineers and contractors, probably many of those meetings as well. And and above all of that, she's supported and provided guidance now for three superintendents, which is not an easy thing to do. So I know I appreciated all of her guidance. And if that wasn't enough, she's figured out a way to help us lead lead through a pandemic, which none of us expected, and I'm sure Marsha didn't either, thinking that this would be 12 years on the board, that her last two years would be in the middle of a pandemic. So just just truly amazing. So only other thing I would say is through all these successes and challenges and adversity, Marsha has led the board with grace, professionalism and thoughtfulness. She's added what I appreciate as rational thought and critical thinking to help us problem solve and 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 chat and get through our challenging issues. In addition to our district, Marsha is really a true gift to our entire Missoula community. She demonstrates this through her work with Kuanis as many as well as many other organizations. So I've appreciated her connection to the community. As the superintendent, I'll just end by saying I've appreciated her thoughtfulness and her support, especially in my new role here in the district. She's always willing to ask the tough questions, which is really important for a school board member, but also for a board chair. It forces me as the superintendent to think differently and think outside the box, which I think is what the community wants and expects of the board chair. For this reason alone, I can honestly say that Marsha's influence has made us a better school district. And as a community, we all owe her a debt of gratitude for that. So thank you, Marsha.
I guess I'll just.
Well, oh, before you do, I know Casey wants to say a few words.
Okay.
Casey.
Yeah, I I just wanted to say it's been a pleasure to watch you work. You definitely have shown your desire to do what's best for students, families, staff and community. Your calm demeanor, your caring and compassion, your knowledge of MCPS, the community, our systems, and of course, Robert's rules of order have definitely been inspiring. You've been a nice anchor in some very stormy times. And I know you've been tapped for at least the MEF board coming up because someone on it definitely has you in mind. But we appreciate all you do in the community and we know that it's more than just two board meetings a month.
Thanks. I I won't lie, it's a lot more than two board meetings a month, you know? So just want to say, I guess the one thing I want to say is that when I ran for the school board, I didn't have any idea what it was going to be like. And through those 34 trustees I served with, I learned that people in this community care about public education. They try to make the right decisions. Sometimes the right decisions are not always agreed upon by everyone. One thing I'll say, just kind of in more recent times, being able to have meetings on Zoom, so more active participation by the public was really eye opening to me because it was so nice and so important to hear from our public, our teachers, our students, our staff, before we make a decision so that and it, you know, when we were meeting in person, it was a little harder with family commitments and things like that. So I don't know how there's a way to continue with that component. And just one other, I mean, I could go on and on and on forever because it's just been an absolute joy. And whenever anyone asked, why am I doing what they'd always describe as a fairly thankless job? And I'd say, you've got it all wrong, all wrong. I love being on the school board. It really feels like we as a group make a big difference in this community. And the one thing I really miss this year is going to the schools and visiting with the schools and even just having the student trustees here to get to know them. So I look forward to everyone getting vaccinated so that next year, 2021, 22, will look a much more connected to our community and to our school system kind of year because that's the one really tough thing that it's been hard since last March to kind of lose that interaction. Although we got to see a lot of faces, including 300 on Zoom and I think 285 or something like that on Facebook in the five hour meeting that we had. So that was really impressive that the community cared that much to be involved in our school district. So thank you to the community especially as well. And with that, I have nothing else to say.
So yeah, this is a little awkward when the chair steps down. So is there other folks that have public comment or board comment?
I just like to say I think Marsha has made us have absolute compliance with the open meeting law. And Montana's open meeting law is very important and it's what gives our our public agencies their power and their 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 authority, their right to to govern is the openness. And so I don't feel like since Marsha's been chair that we've made any mistakes in the realm of public meeting, and that's really hard to do. So I really appreciate her efforts in that area.
Thank you, Marsha. And we have your plaque, Marsha referenced plaques earlier. We do have her plaque here with some flowers and some refreshments. So I hope the board members can stick around after the meeting just to wish Marsha well. Thank you, Marsha. Anne?
I I just want to know, do you, are you going to change your mind? We do have an opening.
I, you know, I'll I'll just say, you know, that's a one year term, which might be workable if that would happen. But I really think it's a good time to let someone else be involved in the process as well. And actually, I'd like to be able to plan a vacation that's longer than 10 days. I haven't done that since I've been on the board because there were three committee meetings and a board meeting and now there's two board meetings each month. So I want to go somewhere now that I can go somewhere. So anyway, but but thank you. And that thought has crossed my mind and I'm hoping good candidates come out of the process that you all are just about to talk about, so.
Thanks, Marsha. Pat, do you want to do D2?
You bet. So I would also like to thank trustee Holland and trustee Sturbis. And it's amazing the dedication that it takes to be a trustee and I marvel at that and I thank you all for your service. So item D2, we're issuing certificates of election to two candidates tonight. They are trustees, trustee Grace Decker and trustee Nancy Hobbins. Thank you for your continued service to MCPS and the community. Both candidates were elected by acclamation. On April 13th, the board declared both candidates elected by acclamation in accordance with MCA 20-3-313. This means that the number of open positions was equal to the number of candidates that's filed for election or submitted as a write-in candidate. As a result, the election was duly canceled and notice of cancellation was made. From the high school side, following the deadline for candidates to file, there were no applicants for the high school trustee seats for districts B and C. District B is Target Range and District C is Hellgate. The certificate of election must be issued to the elected trustee designating the term of the trustee's position. That's under 20-20-416. The term for both candidates is three years. The certificate of election must be issued within 25 days of the election, which is May 28th, so we're in compliance there. To assume the trustee position, the candidates must be qualified. To be qualified requires that the candidates take the oath of office. And the oath of office will be, I'll administer the oath of office tonight. And and so with one candidate with trustee Decker remote and and trustee Hobbins here, maybe you could both stand up and I'm not sure if trustee Decker could get on the big screen or not.
Trustee Decker, if you just unmute and start talking for a moment, we'll be able to see you on the screen in the boardroom.
Okay, hi, I'm here.
There we go. All right, so if you both could raise your right hand for me and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear that I will support, protect and defend the Constitution of the United States.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear that I will support, protect and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Montana.
And the Constitution of the State of Montana.
And the Constitution of the State of Montana.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity, so help me God.
And I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
Very good. So I will get your respective signatures and file this with the county superintendent's office and welcome aboard again. So I think the next item is also for me. And this next item is the the election of the board chairperson. And our typical process for selecting the board chairperson is to accept nominations without a second and then for the board to vote based upon the alphabetical order of each nominee. And rather than ask for nominations, what I'd like to do is is just open the the floor up to the board of trustees to to identify who is interested in this in the position and to help help narrow the scope of who might be nominated for for chairperson. And this is, you know, this is your chairperson. So at the point when when we're ready to accept nominations, then then I can can ask for those and we can proceed as we typically have. But with that, I would open the floor for any for any discussion with respect to the chairperson. Hey, Pat, trustee Lorenzen? Yes?
So, Pat, thanks. I really appreciate you taking this time. I felt like because we spent so much time on Zoom this year that we don't really know each other, that the board really hasn't met each other. So I guess to start, I would be, you know, it'd be nice just to say who we are and when we were elected and etc. So I'll start.
So I'll start. I'm Diane Lorenzen. I was elected eight years ago. I have one year left. I represent the K-12 district. I'm interested in being chairman as a transitional to help the next sort of generation to really get their feet on the ground, so.
Nancy Hobbins, I was just elected, five minutes ago. I am learning so much, you know, as I, as I enter this board, and I would be, you know, grateful to whoever is stepping up to be chairperson.
I'm Jeff Avgaris. I feel like I was elected five minutes ago. It's been one of those years. But yeah, I am a K-12 trustee, and yeah, it's been a fun year. And I do hope that as things get more close to normal, as time goes on, we can all get to know each other. I'm probably not really interested in the board chair position at this time, one year in. But I'm looking forward to supporting one of you more experienced board members and following your lead.
I'm Willina Olperson, and I'm on year two of trustee. And as I say earlier in the meeting, I was on, asked to be part of the elementary boundary committee, and I saw the lack of participation from the BIPOC community. And so that really pushed me forward to be part of the school board. I support Diane in her wanting to be chair of this committee, yeah.
I'm Anne Wake. I've been on the board since 2013. I would also be interested in being chair, but I will concede to Diane. And I've enjoyed every minute I've been on the board. There's always something new you learn, always. The kids are wonderful, and I just, I can't say enough.
I'm Jen Vogel. I'm a high school trustee for District D, which is Sealy Lake, Potomac, Green Ow, and Clinton. I'm also a special ed teacher in Potomac. This is my first in a couple of months. Got you beat by just a little bit as a board trustee, but I am severely not interested in becoming the chair. And I will happily support, happily support trustee Lorenzen in all of her endeavors.
I'm Cohen Mercer. I am a elementary trustee. I am a public defender by life and profession. Yeah, still very much learning. And I guess I wanted to do this because, at the time, national politics were disappointing, and there's still hope for us locally.
I guess, is it, is it me? Hi, so I'm Grace Decker, and I've been on the board for six years at this point, so two terms. I have a, a full-time job that keeps me really pretty busy, and I know exactly, or I don't probably know exactly, but I do know that the board chair is a significant commitment of time and availability. It's not something that I am able to even consider in my life at this point. And I, my hat is firmly off to those who are able. I will say that I've had a conversation with Willina, with trustee Olperson, about the board chairpersonship. And although she's only been serving on the board for a year, I really encouraged her to consider board chairmanship, chairpersonship herself because I really appreciate her voice and her perspective that she brings. And I think as a, as a way to ensure that the voice of our BIPOC community is at all decision-making tables, I think that would really be a strong statement. I was grateful that she was willing to consider that. However, the idea of trustee Lorenzen's experience at the board chair for a year to kind of help transition and guide and give trustee Olperson time to continue kind of learning and being part of that. So when we get to the question of board vice chair, I'd be very interested in considering whether trustee Olperson would be willing to, to be nominated for that position. So that's where I'm at.
Well, thank you all. And I'm, is there any further comment, Willina or trustee Olperson?
Can we nominate? I would like to nominate trustee Lorenzen.
All right, the nominations are open. Trustee Lorenzen, any further nominations? Any further nominations for board chair? One last time, any further nominations for board chair? All right, the nominations are closed. There is, uh, the nomination of trustee Diane Lorenzen as board chair. All those in favor, please say aye or raise your hand. And that's unanimous. I happily turn the, the gavel, which I don't have, over to you, trustee Lorenzen.
Thank you, Pat, and I do plan to use it. Yeah, thank you all. I think, this year I've been going to the agenda settings with Marcia and the administrative team. And I, I do work full-time, but I'm able, because I work for an engineering company and I have an office at the university, I'm very flexible to do the extra, the extra time. So I'm really looking forward to this year as a transition year. I'm usually not comfortable upfront, but I really, I like to help other people succeed. So I'm really looking forward to that. So first, we'll take nominations for a vice chairperson for the elementary district. That would be the K-12 representatives. Are there any nominations for elementary? Cohen?
Will trustee Olperson accept a nomination? I nominate trustee Olperson.
Okay, are there any other nominations for elementary chair, vice chair? Okay, nominations are closed. Everyone in favor of trustee Olperson for elementary vice chair, please raise your hand. And that is unanimous as to... You can vote for yourself. So that is unanimous. And then we would take nominations for vice chairperson for secondary. Oh, Grace?
I nominate Anne Wake.
Okay, there's a nomination for Anne Wake. Anne Wake is currently our vice chair for secondary. She's also very active with the Montana School Boards Association. Are there any other nominations? Seeing none, the nominations are closed. All trustees in favor of Anne Wake for vice chair for the secondary, please signify by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to all trustees present. Let's see. So our next agenda item is to appoint the clerk for 2021. This is both elementary and secondary. Right now, Pat McHugh is our clerk, and I would entertain a motion to reappoint Pat as clerk.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, motion by trustee Wake, is there a second? Second by trustee Olperson? Are there any other nominations for clerk? All trustees in favor of appointing Pat McHugh as the clerk for 21, '22, please signify by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to all trustees present. The final nomination is to appoint a grants designee for 21, 2021, 2022 school year. Typically, the grants designee is the superintendent, correct? Yeah, that is typical. So is there a nomination for a grants designee?
I'll make that motion for Dr. Watson.
Okay, it's been moved to point Dr. Watson as grants designee. Does anyone have any other motions? All trustees in favor of appointing the superintendent as grant designee for 2021, 2022, please signify by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to all trustees present. Our final two items are to declare the open seats on the board to be vacant. And I know Pat's going to explain that. And I, I've been thinking, we talked a lot about which elementary district these representatives come out of. I think to, to get the public to, to see themselves in this position, I would suggest that certainly the Hellgate Elementary District seat, which I think is B, is actually the representative of Big Sky High School. And in my eight years on the board, Big Sky High School has been very underrepresented. I think trustee Sturbis is the only active Big Sky parent we've had. The other position is Target Range and Bonner, which is kind of an odd combination. Target Range is one of our biggest feeder schools for Big Sky High School. Bonner represents a demographic of rural students coming into Hellgate High School, which I think also Jen represents as well. So I just wanted to say that, Pat, before I turned it over, that if we just keep in mind that this is the rep, this, the purpose of these seats is to represent our high schools, and particularly Big Sky High School. So turn it over to Pat if you want to give us an official reading on this.
You bet, thanks, thanks, Chair Lorenzen. And so beginning on, on page, well, really on, on page 68, we have a, a timeline that we've proposed and, and have used in the past. I apologize that there was some information that was, was cut off from the timeline. But what it contemplates, as you'll see, is that the, that tonight, the trustees will be asked to declare the, these positions vacant. And the first agenda item references District B, which, which is the Target Range area, and the Target Range School is within that, that area. If the trustees, then, after declaring the position vacant and initiating a process to fill the vacancy, will have 60 days to do so. If they fail to do so, then, then the county superintendent would, would undertake that task. So as, as reflected in the timeline, July 9th would be the end of the 60-day period based upon tonight's night, tonight's declaration of the open position. We would post and publicly notice the open positions and invite applications. The, the date hasn't been identified for the submittal of the applications. I, I penciled in a June 8th timeframe, which would be approximately two weeks prior to the June 22nd board meeting. And so if, if those candidates are interviewed during the board meeting on the 22nd, then the deadline for applications on June 8th would give ample opportunity to, to prepare for, for that, that meeting on June 22nd. It would also provide close to a month's time for applications to be submitted. And I, I, I don't think that you need tonight to, as part of your action, to identify those, those dates. I mean, I think with the assistance of the superintendent's office, they can be laid out. But really, tonight, it's about declaring the, the position vacant and authorizing the initiation of the process for appointment, which follows this similar timetable that we're, that's attached. Also attached is the interview application and interview in-person questions that would be asked. And you'll see that they've been significantly narrowed, which was a great task and a great effort by the board to, to simplify and shorten those questions. And there are tasks on, on page 69. Be hap, happy to answer any questions.
Are there any board questions for Pat? Go ahead, Anne.
In the past, we've had this happen before. And in the past, we've been fortunate that people were willing to step forward to be considered for the positions. What happens if they, we don't get anybody? I mean, I, it concerns me that people aren't willing to step forward here. I mean, I understand it takes a great commitment on their part to be able to do this. But this is very, to me, this is very important, to be represented in these particular areas. What happens if we don't get anybody and it goes to the superintendent? How long does the superintendent have then?
Yeah, it's, it's a great question. And I think the statute just references our 60 days. And then if we fail to do so within 60, then the county superintendent will, will, will take on the task of appointing. But I don't think that there's a similar timetable under her appointment process.
So then it would be, we'd, we'd have these open positions. We could prospectively have these open positions for a long time.
It, it's possible absent an appointment, but, and, and really, you know, the dates that, that you would look at, if you obviously see no applications by the, by a June 8th date, you would extend that out because you have more time. It's the, the July deadline of July 9th is kind of difficult just given the Fourth of July and the fact that vacations take place. So hopefully, we'll have applicants that'll be interested and motivated that'll submit. We've been, with all the appointments I've been involved with, there's always been an applicant, but you're right, it's not always been easy.
Right, thank you.
Are there any other questions? Via?
I don't have a question, but it's an answer to Anne's question. And Pat is correct, there's nothing in the statute that puts a timeline on the county superintendent. And there are districts that have had open positions for years. However, it's, it hasn't been an issue here. And even when we've gotten close to it in the past, we generally go out and try and help people along in that process to see if they, maybe they don't, they don't know we're really looking. And with the county superintendent, when it does revert to her, she will do a similar process of essentially soliciting applications. So in a district this size, we won't wait that long, but it's possible we could have open positions for an extended period.
Thank you. I just, I don't want to be a naysayer. I just, it just concerns me that nobody was willing to step forward and run this time, so. And all the time I've been on the board, it's only happened, maybe once.
Are there any other questions for Pat? I have a question. If we are down two trustees, is our quorum still the same? The size of us, our quorum?
Yeah, so you have 11-person board, and these are two high school positions with four, uh, four trustees, four high school-only trustees. So the high school, there's plenty of high school trustees because your K-12 trustees are seven plus four, just high school trustees. So the, the quorum would, 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 I mean, it's still conceivable of both elementary and high school to have a quorum based upon the 11 positions.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions for Pat? Okay, do we have a motion to declare the high school district B position vacant and authorize the administration to initiate the process for appointment? Anne?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, motion by trustee Wake, second by trustee Avgaris. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all trustees in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand. Oh, I'm sorry. Is there any public comment on the motion? Seeing none, all trustees in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand. And there's Grace. Okay, that's unanimous as to all trustees present. And then we have the same, a similar topic in the next item. Pat, do you want to fill us in on that one?
You bet. So the, similar to the previous agenda item, but for District, District C, which is the Hellgate Elementary area. And I guess the only other item I would add is that the, the, both trustee positions are three-year positions, but, but whoever is appointed would, would need to, would need to run the, in the school election the following spring, May 3rd, 2022. So that's, trustee Hobbins was in that situation and trustee Vogel as well. So you, they would have to run for, in the following spring, despite the fact that it's a three-year term.
Okay, are there any questions for Pat? All right, does anyone want to make a motion to, as per the recommendation?
Still moved.
Motion by trustee Avgaris, is there a second? Second by trustee Hobbins. Any board discussion? Any public comment? Seeing none, all trustees in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand. And that's unanimous as to all trustees present. Our, finally, we have public comment on non-agenda items at the end of the meeting. Is there any public comment? All right, seeing no public comment, the meeting is adjourned.
Please, board members, if you would want to, please stick around for some refreshments in the back there.
Thanks, everybody.